And Father, we just thank you for this day and all. We just thank you for all the blessings that you have given us. Lord, Father, just help us to make good sound decisions tonight. Lord, as we do work for the city of the Lord, just give us wisdom and guidance. Lord, Father, we just thank you for your son, Christ Jesus, and in his name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us tonight. This time, Jane, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Mitch, introduction of new city employees?
Uh, no, no, sir, not.
Next, we'll consider and approve the minutes of the May 25 meeting. There are no additions or corrections. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes as read?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as read for the May 25 meeting.
Second. Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider and approve the monthly departmental reports. If you have a question, please identify the page.
On page 29, with the public budget report, street sweep. I've asked, because we're waiting on some hydraulic lines and stuff, do we have a timeframe on when our street sweeper is going to be up and going, or if it's going to be up and going?
Not a timeframe at this moment. Find somebody that kind of specializes in pumps and stuff like that.
At one point, we had discussed sending it into Dallas to the company. Is that still an option?
Yeah, we're going to need that. We think we can find somebody to lead those lines semi-locally.
And if that's not, y'all are currently looking at some options for the budget. Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, we're kind of demonstrating a great difference, sweeper with us. Demonstrated one this morning, and we'll have some more to consider a bunch of time to replace that machine we have as an option.
Okay. Do we have any kind of backup plans for that, or are there pictures there? I mean, what is there?
Well, we've been using this company, Love of Jordan Power Sweep, and they've done a couple of rounds with us. I still have some money we can spend on that if we need to. I could call them. It's been hard to get over here. They usually cut me off a couple of weeks in getting here, so I can look at another company that can get over here more allowed it. But that's about the scale we would be doing on the street sweep.
Is that an issue y'all want to talk about at a future meeting, or y'all want to wait until budget time? It's been talked about for a long time. You want to bring it up next meeting? Some action on it, or wait till about here?
Part of it, we need to start discussing the budget.
We'll have a budget party. I'm planning on having one in front of you by next meeting.
You may, might as well go ahead and do something planned, but start discussing the budget.
So, just put it into the budget deal. In the meantime, I guess, give us updates on when we might get back to operation.
Any other departmental reports? Can we get a motion to approve the monthly departmental reports?
I'd like to say one for you real quick, Eric. I just wanted to say thanks to the, to the, uh...
Our trash department.
Man, for everything you've done. I know we've had a lot of, a lot of problems and stuff that's come up and, you know, considering everything that we've had, I just want to say thank you for going, you know, to accommodate and going out on the weekend and something, helping with our, with our problem. And just, just thanks.
Thanks, y'all. We've got it kind of under control now, don't we?
Oh, yeah.
You've got some drivers hired. Can you give the council an update on kind of where you're at with the trash?
Yeah, we're actually got it, kind of hit it off now, so, you know, it can only go up now, so.
You've got two drivers hired.
Yes, sir.
And three trucks operational.
Uh, yes. We had a few hiccups with one, but guy from Morton's coming up to take it out, so.
Possibly a fourth.
And possibly a fourth, so.
Thank you to all the water guys, too, that worked for us.
Oh, really?
So, if you have two supplemental pages to your water report that you missed in the departmental report, you should keep those in mind. There's no more questions, can we get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion we approve the monthly departmental reports.
Second. Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Michael, that we approve the monthly departmental reports. Is there any further questions or discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider and approve the May expenses. If you have a question, please identify the page.
There'll need to be a motion to approve all the bills except for always towing.
Have one bill for always towing?
I think it's 1, 5, 11, 31.
Page 48.
If there are no questions on those, can we get a motion that we hold out on always towing expenses for the next weekend?
I'll make a motion that we approve the May expenses with the exception of always towing. Page 48, 11, 31.
Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider and approve the always towing expenses for this last month.
I'll strengthen both.
Is there a motion to approve the expenses for always towing? I make the motion we approve the expenses for always towing. Second. Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny, that we approve the expenses for always towing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? One abstained. Motion carries.
Jeremy, do you need to get on?
We're not out of, we don't have much to get it out of. We've got just one.
Next, we'll consider and approve plans for volunteer efforts for regular area cleanup events, Mitch?
Mayor, I put down there just a count, more or less, just some publication on what we're trying to do here. I've got some individuals in the public, and I don't know, at least one council member's contacted me about some cleanups, and I've got your memo there and a form that we can use volunteers to, to help us instead of confiscate cleanup. And got the memo there, so if you don't want to approve those plans or just allow us to keep moving forward with this, if not really approval that needs to be made, but I think it'd be good to, to at least have the council's general approval of how to address the, the need for volunteers.
What would that be?
Well, I think there've been some efforts that try to kind of start themselves, and, and I know Eric's talked to me a little bit, council members have talked to me a little bit about organizing some cleanups, and how we can use the volunteers is, is they can organize the cleanups, get volunteers, and then the city can kind of help behind the scenes with the cost for roll-offs and stuff. And I've got the form there for volunteers to fill out. I think the one volunteer I talked to wanted to organize and something to do with school and some credit or something for doing a project like this. So, I feel like we've got all of the areas covered as far as what we need, like trash bags and roll-offs and things, and the, I think the city's used to try to do a citywide cleanup every now and then, and my experience with those has been that they're, they overwhelm you, and people will wait until the citywide cleanup, and then you get overwhelmed in the alleys with material that people have saved up right before that cleanup. And, you know, our cleanup is year-round, so area cleanups, I think would be good, because volunteers can have a little more leeway as far as going and picking up trash out of somebody's yard. If the city does it, it's not, it needs to be connected with some kind of a legal action. And if we try to do that on every piece of property that has trash on it, it's just not very useful, so.
Make a motion we approve the plan for volunteer efforts for area cleanup events. Allow the city manager to set those up, schedule them, and work with volunteer group to coordinate them. Second. Motion's been made by Eric, seconded by Michael. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Kenny, I'm going to abstain from 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. He'll take over.
All right. Next, we're going to consider and approve the naming of Highway 385 Business Park Edition property number 17, 908 and 34, 502. The 5.905 acres out of track 36 of the College High Subdivision to the city of Littlefield.
Mitch?
This is a formality of naming the development, and then we'll get on into the plat approval and so forth. Just a motion to approve the naming.
So, do we have a name of the title, or is it just?
Yes, Highway 385 Business Park Edition.
I make a motion that we approve the naming of Highway 385 Park Edition property number 17908 and number 34, 502.
Motion's been made by Michael. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made by Michael and seconded by Buddy for the procurement of the naming of Highway 385 Business Park Edition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're going to open it up to a public hearing for preliminary plat for Highway 385 Business Park Edition, plat property 1709 and 34, 502, College High Subdivision to the city of Littlefield. Anybody?
Nobody's requesting to speak, but they can if they want to now.
Just kind of overview, this is the city's authority, plating authority is, you know, the way we get everything done, so the way we get utilities and streets improvements installed is to, is to exercise our authority for plating. So, the next two items are public hearing for a preliminary plat, and then the next hearing after that is for zone change.
Anyone else carry the comment? If not, then we'll move on to number, item number 13 is a public hearing amending the zoning regulations of the city of Littlefield, Texas, adding zoning change from C1 commercial, lot retail, et cetera, to C2 commercial, general in lots 1, 2, 3 of Highway 385 Business Park Edition property 1709, 17, 908 and 34, 502, College High Subdivision, city of Littlefield, Clay and County. Do you have anyone else?
No, sir.
Mitch, you have anything you want to?
No, this is just a public hearing to consider this opportunity.
Don't change out there, Mitch?
Let's make sure we have a public comment to get into it, okay?
So, if we have no, no, no comments on that, let's move, we will now move to item number 14. Consider, we will consider and approve preliminary plat approval for Highway 385 Business Park Edition, plat property 17908 and 34, 502, College High Subdivision, the city of Littlefield, Texas. Mitch?
Yes, we've got Jeremy Cheatham here with Center Line Engineering, and they're the ones that designed this subdivision property, and I've got kind of both things on one sheet here that doesn't change in the, in the preliminary plat. Just to kind of go over the preliminary plating authority the city has is, like most other cities, you go through a process, and the preliminary plat is filed with the city and along the civil drawings. And in your packet back on, actually on item number, I've got bigger drawings than that, starting on page 62, actually 60. Those are the civil drawings that are showing the utilities. There's water sewer and streets that will be installed. They'll tap off of, you know, Highway 84 for sewer, and then the sewer, the water tap's going to come off of 35. And these bits are in there, and, and the street dedication is included in the, I believe we've covered all of the items that are in the subdivision regulation for this preliminary plat. Now, the preliminary plat, if you approve it tonight, that gives them the checkered flag to start, or free flag, I guess, to get started putting in the streets and, and utilities. And once all of those are put in and accepted by the city, they'll become city property, and water sewer and streets will remain timed by us going forward. But they all go into the cost of the developer, and then the developer, of course, recovers the cost of development from the lots when they sell them. But this is the city's authority to get the improvement statement, and once they, they install utilities and street, then it'll come back to the planning, zoning, and back to the city council for final plat approval. And that will be months from now, and the final plat, when it's approved, gives authority to sell those individual lots once that's finished. The, our engineer for the city reviewed the civil drawings, and there were just very few comments, and I believe y'all addressed all of those things at that time. But denied the preliminary plat approval, and that's what's in front of you right now. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If you're going to be here, we can answer them, too.
So, on, on this approval, that'll, that'll also give approval to change from C1 to C2.
No, that's the next item. This is just the preliminary plat.
And what is going out there?
The only thing that's over sure is a car wash on lot number one, but that's...
So, that's on the highway, the 84?
It's on 35. We don't have anything going on 84 yet, but the, the zone would be C1, so it's a little higher requirement on, on that, along highway, along, along, along 35 as you come in from the south. That would be C2 zone if y'all approve it.
And on this plat, you said something about getting your road built and stuff. That's going to be?
Yeah, that's all on the cost of the developer. They pay for water sewer and streets.
And that's going to be propping gutter?
Yes. Believe it or not, it's probably asphalt street.
After we accept it, if it's done according to our specifications and engineered plans
and stuff, then we'll accept it, and it'll be ours.
Are there any other questions in this addition part right here that won't affect nothing else that's out there right there, that house?
No, it doesn't have an effect on any of the property around it that I know of. There's no...
Church wise, and then there's another house back over here on the...
No, it doesn't affect any of those properties.
East part ain't, there's another house back up that way? So, it won't affect nothing like that, I would say?
No, it will not. This is just this property around the, the vacant property around this drive.
There's no more discussion. I make a motion that we approve the preliminary plat approval for Highway 385 Business Park Edition plat properties 17, 908 and number 35, 502.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made by Michael, been seconded by Buddy to through the preliminary plat for Highway 385 Business Park Edition, plat property 17908 and number 34, 502, College High Subdivision, the city of Littlefield. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're going to consider and approve an ordinance amending the zoning regulations of the city of Littlefield, adding zoning change from C1 commercial, light retail, et cetera, to C2 commercial, general in lots 1, 2, and 4 of Highway 385 Business Park Edition property 17908 and 34, 502, College High Subdivision, the city of Littlefield. Mitch, you got some there?
Yes, these are pretty simple, straightforward zone changes there from C1 to C2 for those back lots, kind of maintaining our higher requirements along 84. Definitely don't see a problem with zone change. We already know what's going on lot one, so, uh, didn't see a problem with it.
And this, we do the...
Pin Z approve? Both of these.
And they need approval?
Yes.
And we need more discussion? Any discussion?
Make a motion we approve the ordinance amending zone regulations of the city of Littlefield, adding zone changes from C1 commercial, light retail, et cetera, to C2 commercial, general in lots 1, 2, and 4 of Highway 385 Business Park Edition.
Motion's been made by Michael, been seconded by Buddy to approve the ordinance amending the zoning regulations, city of Littlefield, Texas, adding zone change from C1 commercial, light retail, et cetera, to C2 commercial, general in lots 1, 2, 4 of Highway 385 Business Park Edition property 17908 and 34, 502. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I guess we're through with that, Eric.
Thanks, Jerry.
Please, Mayor approves him.
Next, we will consider and approve recommendation to the LEDCA for acceptance or rejection of water well development. Mitch?
Hey, I got Justin here to help us along here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We came to you with a project of planning that y'all approved a couple of months ago, Project Oasis, to bring more water to the community, to the drought that we had last year, being that cost of construction and PVC pipes are so high. We initially went out for bid, and having the entire pipe and wells into one bid package, the engineers, and we thought that it'd be better if we rejected bid and re-go out to bid with two different items, being the wells and the pipes, which will reduce the cost and the size of the, the scope of the project. We were quoted at 972,000, and we think by doing this, it'll reduce the cost once the engineer gets back into the country.
Yep, this is strictly a recommendation to the LEDCA to reject the bid.
Traditionally, EDCs don't have to go out to bid for projects. We're doing this as just added insurance for, for the project, to ensure that all items are being met for, for this project.
We've already, in anticipation of the rejection, this bid was advertised. We split the project up. I feel like the wells are within range of the budgeted amount, but the pipeline was just really expensive. So, we're reducing the size of that pipeline. I think still, like a hurting thing, reduce the size of the pipeline. It's 3,000 foot. We're reducing that amount to see if we can get a little better bid. And we're splitting the bids up so that if we have a problem with the pipe cost, we can reject that part of the bid. We could carve that out right now because of the bidding requirements.
Where are we at right now as far as, we got test wells already drilled on this?
We did test wells, logs, and exlets water. The two spots that we picked were right on a river, so we're pretty excited about where we're at, and the way this is going to come about, I would think we're going to have this great well here for a long time.
So, we're just waiting now to get a drill, basically?
Get the bid, yeah.
Get the bid, get a drill.
When does your new bid close?
Well, actually, the engineer was going out of the country, and I didn't want him to be out when the questions are asked and stuff, but we'll be able to open that up just before the next council, which is longer than I wanted, but...
So, we won't hump until our next council meeting, or?
Before. I think it was said in front of the 17th or something.
14.
14.
I think that's right.
We haven't hit that by council meeting, or?
Yep. Hoping to have a, if the LEDCA can have their meeting before our council meeting, it would be good.
We only should be able to make that happen. We don't have one driller.
I'm going to bid on this. I'm going to see if we can hustle some more people. This was thunder out of the...
Showers.
Showers. I'm disappointed in the number, but the number was of the actual welder, was around 40 years' age.
Well, I think we all understand what's going on right now as far as the price of supplies and the noise I'm having. I think it's, I think it's wise to kind of do what, you know, to walk in these steps here in a way that we can conserve money or save money or whatever. I think it's wise. But that being said, if there's any question, I'm going to make a motion to approve the recommendations for the rejection of the water well development.
Motion's been made by Kenny to approve the rejection, recommendation to LEDCA for the rejection of the bid. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded by Eric. Is there any further questions or discussion? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider an approved renewal of the City of Lubbock contract for emergency backup water.
Just a five-year contract and there's just one small change of limiting us to 40 million gallons instead of the 45 million before the price goes up. Pretty much everything's the same. They're very gracious with us as far as the use of it and everything. Luckily, we haven't just had these tremendous amount, but about 10 million gallons over the last couple of years, $56,000. Really not part of this, but we're holding that this new pipeline, one mile replacement we're planning. Should we get the plans on that, I think we should relieve a lot of this of the brakes because all of the brakes were brought in that pipeline. I recommend approval of renewal of this contract.
Questions or a motion to approve the renewal of the contract?
I make a motion, we renew the contract of the City of Lubbock for emergency backup water.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider an approved name change regarding the Mill Truck Wash proposed contract.
Our attorney recommends that we can actually take the formal motion to change the name on the contract from Holstein to Cross Integrated Transport. And like I say, this is a proposed contract, it's still not even signed yet, and we're actually getting signed until we have some estimations on the price for the borders. There are born two lines under FN 54 east of railroad tracks, a three-inch water line and a six-inch sewer line.
They're responsible for the consequences. Questions or can we get a motion to approve the name change in the contract?
Make a motion, we approve the name change to the Mill Truck Wash proposed. The proposed contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny to change, approve the name change on the Wash proposed contract. Is there any further questions or discussion? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider an approved proposals for auditor services.
Andrew and I met with these folks, Bollinger, Gilbert, and Maas out of Lubbock, and I believe every, just about every city that's using Web Web and Ride are hustling these guys to get them to do our, all their municipal audit companies, so I think this is right down the alley. I don't see a huge cost difference in using this different auditor. And I'm just opposed to this, which means. Andrew, do you have any comments on this?
Look fine.
Look fine. Yeah, they ask a lot of the right questions, so we feel comfortable with that. We'll be good auditors for us. Having the Web Web and Ride is the one I'm doing, but I think these folks are, they called around and I talked to their land in some different places and they all say they're good.
You entertain a motion to approve the auditor?
I make a motion, we approve the proposal for auditor service.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
That Buddy?
Yeah.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Buddy, that we approve the proposal for auditor services. There's no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we will consider and approve adopting the following rules in order to comply with our new TML health online system. One, allow the defined contribution to be allowed regardless of benefit tier, for example, employee only, employee spouse, employee child, and employee family. Number two, benefit contribution will be deducted in the following order for any benefits for which the employee is enrolled, medical, dental, vision, HSA, HRA, combination of the two, does require a high deductible health fund. Mitch or Janine?
Janine knows a lot more about this than I do, but the city puts in $425 a month to, for health insurance and here we are pointing out the fact that we should do this to make sure that each employee can get full benefit of that, that counter right, Janine?
Yes, I was told it's the new world thing to do, so it's...
Oh, new world thing, yeah.
So...
They get to choose who's covered, basically?
Well, the city back in 2006, or thereabouts, approved to give this each employee $425 towards their health insurance. So that depends on what they pick. If they pick to choose a choice that's got $375, then $50 goes to an HSA card. And this goes, before it goes to an HSA card, it can go to dental or vision or a family member, which it currently doesn't. We're not allowing. So we need to get with their, with their program, with what they're doing, and that's what they want us to approve.
Any questions or discussion? If not, entertain a motion to approve adopting the following rules?
I'll make a motion to approve the following rules in order to comply with the UTML healthcare online system.
Second. Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Michael, that we approve adopting the following rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next, we'll consider an approved participation in an aerial mosquito spraying consortium.
Mayor, y'all looked at this about three years ago and we passed on it. Just wanted to bring it back to you again. I know we've been inundating with a lot of mosquitoes, but gotta say, Lance, they've been hitting them real hard and I, because we still are mosquitoes, I don't know if y'all do, but I mean, I think they've been hitting them pretty hard. If you approve this, this would be something we don't have to participate every time. They usually fly two sorties a year and they get a really high kill rate when they do it. There are a lot of other cities that are getting into this thing and some cities, this is their only mosquito spraying in the area. I think my, it's a good idea to do it that costs us anything unless we use them. It's about 90 cents to a dollar acre with as many people as they have in, planning to, you know, be in the program. It's an inter-local cooperative purchase affiliate agreement with the City of Flannery and each city does this agreement. Our attorney reviewed it and said he didn't see any problems with it, so Tim Crosswatt is the person that flies out of Flannery. This would allow, you know, if we have, the next one they're planning to fly is 4th of July or just before that, or June 28th, I believe. And might not be a bad idea to give it a try on top of what we do. I'd say I'm definitely not disappointed with our effort, but it might not be a bad idea to have, be able to call airstrike in if we do get inundated or something.
They, they scheduled these, you don't just call and say, hey, I'm covering up...
Ransom Canyon, Elena over there, she's kind of helps ramrod this thing. She kind of gets the cities together to see if everybody wants to fly one and I say we don't have to speak, but they'll call each city and say, hey, y'all wanna do one, fly on a particular day? If we have this agreement, I can just say, or I could go to the mayor and we could just say, yeah, let's go and do one. We have about 6,000 acres inside the city limits, but we could probably fly about 4,000 acres, so it would cost us about, about $4,000 to do one sortie. Like I say, I'm not disappointed with our guys, but this is an airstrike we can call in if we wanted to.
So just taking part of this doesn't make us have to do it, it gives us the option, but you can also...
Talk to Chuck or Johnny King or, I don't, you know, talk to them about it. I've talked to them a little bit about it, or talked to Chuck a little bit about it. He's doing some numbering on it, but I just don't know how you can ever beat the, you know, the cost, the cost of a common state.
What's the unit cost to do, just the way we're doing it now, up here in the city?
Probably, we probably spend, how much a year on spray?
I'd say about 10, 12.
10, 12 thousand. Then overtime for...
Overtime.
Always chemical alone, 10 or 12.
That's pretty chemical.
And I'm just like, just on average, it's like, one time going through the city, what would you think? Just, it would run?
Not that much because they'll run, what, three times a week more than?
Three times a week. That usually takes one barrel, one barrel runs about two grand, so...
Takes two trucks, how many hours?
About three and a half, four hours.
Each time?
Yeah.
They've been running down the streets at me hours lately, I think, I think.
Um, trying to. We've got a lot of construction going on, so it's kind of hard to do alleys. You've got people trimming trees and doing stuff.
I'm just saying, look at the cost, yeah. So you look at that and when you're going overhead, I mean, you're getting a better, a better coverage also.
They're calling for some rain this weekend, I mean, it gives them a good option if they're planning one before July 4th to give you the flexibility. I'd ask Mitch to check back into this with Chuck and Johnny. Johnny had been doing some spraying and it just gives you the chance if you're way covered up like we were two weeks ago. I mean, y'all got them way under control now, it seems, but if you ever get a big rain and get behind. But once again, the options are, if we ever decide to do it.
If you need to.
We need to and if we don't, they don't, we've had problems in the past, grew the chemicals backwater or something.
Yes.
To keep a stock of it, but we've had problems before getting on it. So I think it's good, both tools have in our system, we hopefully don't have to use it because our guys are doing it.
I'll make a motion to approve participation in the mosquito spraying for...
Second. Motion's been made by Kenny, seconded by Michael. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Before we move on, Mayor, just to clarify, they've got a flight coming up on June 28th, I think. I think we'd have to let them know now if we want to participate in this next flight. I don't know. I don't see the need to, in fact, currently with the U-LAN, so you got it under control.
Comes up, rains this weekend, then maybe they'll let you come in late, not, and you cover it pretty quick. Next, we'll consider an approved contract for engineering for LEDCA Anger Project. Mitch?
Yes, on this, the LEDCA is anticipating building a 14-stall hangar at the airport and they approved, LEDCA approved a budget for engineering a lot, I think it was 60,000 or not?
It was 90,000.
90,000. We went back to engineer and kind of talked about maybe getting a pre-engineer building and stuff like that, and so kind of beat that number down to about 35,000 for the engineering. The, I asked attorney about this, whether it needed to be on the council agenda and I feel like just kind of followed suit with what we could do with the LEDCA. I think we need to get the council to make a recommendation to go ahead with engineering on that.
Your boards approved this already, is that correct?
Yes.
I hope this be useful, if you don't mind me asking.
The, with the anticipation of these new economic trends going on, a lot of people are trapping a lot through, you know, private business and personal consumption, the demand for hangars in the South Plains region, including the Panhandle as well, is through the roof. There's waiting lists everywhere. If we were able to, with all the development that we've had at the airport, fences, fuel stations, attracting these sort of consumers to come in here and house would make us more advantageous for, you know, being a business-friendly community. There are 14, 14-unit teehangers. If we were to house those, it'd also make us more advantageous for some FFA tech stop grants that we're looking to utilize in the future for the realignment of the airport, but currently right now, Fuel Shoes packed up with wait lists, everybody's trying to find a place to house. If we're able to house this, which I anticipate we would be able to house all 14 of them, maybe we could attract some, you know, general aviation operations there, which is required to be a municipal airport, like a mechanic, you know, they could park here, house it, get a service, you know, Lubbock's usually packed, a lot of the other surrounding communities are as well, so it's really hard to get a mechanic in your community, but these are the things that you would need to go to be competitive for that.
And this will affect our expansion on our airport as far as...
It would, it'd be more advantageous for us if we were to have, house more aircraft. And we approved the industrial airpark out there, so this just gives us even more added, you know, fuel to the fire, which we've already been moving in that direction with the yearly grant grants and investments that we've made out there.
Justin, from your last EDC meeting, how Zach y'all talked about, I mean, this is a very large revenue generator, I mean, of course, the cost is high to build as well, but it could bring in between 40 and 50,000 dollars a year on rent, depending on what they're kind of talking about. Building like Slayton has and Hurford and some other areas that would either continue to provide rental income and cost recovery for LEDCA or could be used possibly as part of an economic development incentive if there was ever a larger FBO or mechanic company or something coming in.
I make a motion, we approve the contract for engineering for LEDCA Anger Project.
I'll second.
Been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny. Is there any further discussion? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll consider an approved annual financial assurances as required by TCEQ for the municipal landfill.
Mayor, this is something we do every year to satisfy our permit for landfill and don't hold that much back, other than this requirement for post-closure maintenance. If they find some, something in the landfill or something, or termination, this money would supposedly be used to clean up some kind of environment, spill or something like that that happened in our landfill. So it's a requirement that's put on our, our landfill for... for post-closure maintenance.
And you wasn't one of these permits just closed with what we did last year?
Well, not technically, really. I don't guess.
Post-closure.
I haven't gotten any...
We haven't got any notification. If we can drop that off the liability.
I think the only way to avoid any kind of post-closure, if you'd closed the landfill before 1989. But all these that we're talking about here, ones that are active or just closed, we still have to do.
So, this letter is from you, correct? Did you make this letter?
The, the letter of credit.
Well, this letter is, I mean, is it coming from First Financial Bank or?
Yeah.
They'll send it, a technical letter of credit.
Yes. But TCEQ requires a letter dividing it up.
You send a letter saying, here's our letter of credit.
And we send a letter of credit.
It looks a little different than what we had in the past, but we are getting one from our financial...
Yes.
Yes.
Just around that, what, 4,000?
Also, I mean, I don't doubt it's a check on that one where y'all did the work and we, the fence, if that's not...
That, yeah, I know for sure that that doesn't relieve us from our 12-year maintenance by code. It's 12-year post-closure.
And one thing in the past, Andrew, you can do, just future, is at one point, we just put up CDs.
CD or something.
Which eliminates the cost of the letter of credit because they charge a percentage of...
Charge 1%.
1%. Something to think about in the future.
Yep.
So, this is a requirement. Are there any other questions about this? If not, can we get a motion to approve the annual financial assurance?
I make a motion to approve the annual financial assurance as required by TCEQ for the landfill.
Motion's been made by Michael. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's seconded by Buddy. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Go into executive session regarding real property, Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, well, 071, 551.072, deliberations about real property. And we might use 551.071 causation at the turn.
Next, we'll consider an approved action regarding real property. I make a motion to approve action regarding real property, including the purchase of a magnified house.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Buddy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.